Good evening and welcome to Channel 17, Town Meeting Television. We have a full night of candidate forums for you tonight for the Burlington City Council. And we will be starting off the night with Ward Five. I have two candidates here with me, Jesse Warren, progressive, and Chip Mason, the incumbent and a Democrat. Please do give us a call if you have questions for the candidates. The number is (802) 862-3966. We'd love to hear from you. And we're going to get things started with opening statements. Jesse, go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Morgan, for hosting tonight and Channel 17 for putting this show on. And the voters of Ward Five who are being so involved in this democratic process and tuning in tonight and watching this on the Internet later. So I think it's good to start off with why I decided to run in this race. At a most fundamental level, what got me involved in this is my own experience growing up as a kid who moved around a lot. And the reason for that was mostly about money, and it was about trying to find an affordable place to live. And I did experience firsthand how that really impacted my development as a kid, my brother and sister. The impacts that had on our family were very powerful. And so when I talk to families across the South End who are going through similar things, who are being forced to move in the middle of the school year at some points because they can't afford the house they're living in, I think about my own experience where I struggled in school as a result of those sorts of things. So at a most basic level, it's about seeing that that's happening in Burlington and wanting to do something about it because I lived through that myself. You know, I think it's also important to talk about the benefits, though, that that experience gave me, which is that it really taught me to, it forced me to have to understand the people in my community and to have to listen to people that I may disagree with, but just to try to find the common ground between us. That was something that was instilled in me as a result of growing up like that. And so that's something I think that we could use more of across the city on every issue and something I want to bring to the city council as your city councillor for Ward Five.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great.
Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Morgan. I'll echo, you know, thank you, Jesse, for being here. Also, thank you, Morgan, for hosting tonight and for Channel 17 to allowing this opportunity to connect with voters. For those who don't know me, my name is Chip Mason. I am the incumbent. I have had the privilege and honor of serving as a city councillor for the last six years. I was born and raised in Burlington. I grew up in the North End, attended Burlington Public Schools as well as the University of Vermont. I lived in the South End and particularly on Scarf Avenue for over 20 years with my spouse and two children who were both in the public schools. I faithfully served the community as a coach, volunteer, nonprofit boards, and in various offices on behalf of the city over the last 20 years, in part because of how passionate I feel about the city of Burlington and trying to make it better. I have tremendously enjoyed service the last six years. It has been a privilege to represent the constituents in addressing some of the legal and financial issues that we were grappling with. I'm proud of the work that we've done in turning the city's finances around, restoring the city's credit rating, working collaboratively with the unions to tackle some of the unfunded pension liability, opening up bike lanes and making our streets more walk-bike friendly, adopting form-based code that we believe will incentivize infill development in the downtown and add to our grand list, which is required. Knocking on doors the last couple of weeks, I think Jesse and I were hearing the same thing. Affordability is a huge issue, and although it's not necessarily a city council issue, the schools are a major source of tension and confusion and concern in the community. If I am fortunate enough to be re-elected, these are issues that I hope to work very collaboratively with the administration and the council to address, and I'm sure we're going to touch on more detail on those points through the Q and A tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so staying with the topic of affordability and personal experiences or relationships that you have that will inform your time on the council, could you each tell us about someone you know who is a renter, using food stamps, having trouble paying medical bills, or who makes less than $15 an hour, and how that relationship will inform, or that experience or talking to people about that, how that will inform your time on the council if you're elected? And Chip, we'll start with you.
Sure. That's a big question, and I'll try and break down into parts. I'm part of the community, of course. There are many people that I know that are struggling to exist in the city of Burlington. It's an issue every door I knock on. You hear about questions about affordability. It's also an issue we grapple with, not just as a matter of policy on the council, but I'm also the chair of the Board of Tax Appeals, and I hear all the very hard cases of residents of Burlington who can't afford to pay their taxes. And it's an issue we struggle with in terms of compassion, but also trying to figure out what can we do as a city. In terms of informing what that will do, as we've touched on, I think affordability of housing in particular is an issue that we are going to have to deal with as a city. We are dealing with it, I would say, but we obviously have not solved it. It remains a huge challenge for many people to live in Burlington. And I think the risk and the concern that many have is we become stratified, such that you have really just two classes. You have those who are high net worth individuals who can afford to live in Burlington, and then the other tier being people who are receiving social services or getting some assistance to live here. And the gap or the hole is the critical part of what makes, you know, those are the middle income families who are putting their kids into the school and are heavily involved. And I am, I think, as the rest of the council, is very concerned about that missing middle piece.
Okay. Jesse?
Yeah. Well, in answer to the first original question about the experience of people I know or who have been struggling with these issues, look, I said in my opening statement, this is something that I've been through in my own life and my own family growing up. So I certainly bring that to the, that's going to, in many ways, inform my perspective on this. Further, I mean, again, same thing, talking to families all across the South End who are going through these difficult issues surrounding affordability, surrounding the ripple effects of that. But I've lived it myself. It sounds like we're sort of, this question, we can sort of answer the affordability question. And when we talk about affordability, I do think market rate housing is part of the solution, but it's only a part of the solution. And it's not going to lift up the quarter of Burlingtonians who are living in poverty, as Councillor Mason alluded to, to a degree. And we have to be doing more. So I think that's when we talk about affordable housing, I think that's what people are saying is we have to be doing more for those people who are really struggling, again, as Councillor Mason was pointing out. I think we also have to be looking at this issue, though, talking about the systemic issues underlying the affordability crisis. Because another one of the questions we might talk about tonight is people that don't have enough food in Burlington or people who, about wages in Burlington, and all these issues are connected. And I want to see us get to the root of them and talk about that. We do need to be doing things like talking about building more affordable housing and all these things, but we also need to be focused on the deeper issues underlying it, which is connected to issues of education. It's connected to our political process and making sure everyone feels represented so that the decisions we're making are adding up in a way that's going to be representative of their needs as renters, as homeowners, whatever it is. I guess we'll talk more about that with the next couple of questions, but.
Yeah. Well, and staying in that vein, let's move on to housing specifically. What are solutions you would propose for the housing issues that Burlington is facing, especially generating housing that's attainable for minimum wage workers? And if you would like to, in your answer, touch on either of the recent housing reports, either the 2014 one that was about housing broadly or the more recent report on Burlington's inclusionary zoning ordinance. Again, that's something that requires large developments to have affordable housing, at least as defined in city statute. So this time, starting with Jesse, go ahead.
So I'll just continue on what I was saying before. In terms of, we can talk about inclusionary zoning. The report, I think, said we built close to 1,800 total units, and 270 of those were inclusionary zoning, inclusionary units, affordable units. That is good, but I think we can do better. I think we have to remember, too, that the issue of affordable housing is also about our entire economy as a city. Because when people don't have any money to spend at going out to eat at a restaurant or anything, or they don't have enough money to go buy something at one of our great local shops, that's going to hurt our economy because they're spending all their money on rent. So we have to be looking at this more holistically. We also have to look at how housing is connected to wages and how we can raise wages for people. We have to do that based on sound policy, based on effective solutions, but we do have to talk about that. And we can talk about little things, again, on housing all day. I think another thing we need to do is maximize the full potential of our current housing stock. I think when we talk about building housing, that's good, but we have a lot of units in homes that could be accessory units that are not being brought up to code because people, A, it's hard to deal with code, or it's hard to, they don't have the money. But I think we could talk about a grant program where people could, where we could provide a grant to bring up, for example, a basement up to code, build the egress windows they need, build the second entrance they need, and then in exchange for that grant, offer that as a unit of affordable housing. And I think we should be looking into how that would, how many units we can build across the city by taking that approach, in addition to the other approaches we're taking and looking at the issue systemically and talking about all the connected issues connected to it.
All right. Thank you. And Chip?
Thank you, Morgan. I think part of solving the housing crisis or the affordability crisis is more housing. I know there's been disagreement among the council and among some of the political candidates over whether the economics support that or don't, but from my perspective, we are not going to solve the housing crisis unless we build more housing. And I don't mean high-end housing. I mean housing across the board, both inclusionary units, affordable units, as well as high-end units. There is a demand, and really, from my perspective, that's one of the only ways that we're going to bend the curve. Affordability has also become a major problem because of the increases in school funding is, or school taxes are driving in part. Those taxes don't get absorbed by landlords. They get passed through to tenants. So working with the school board to try and identify ways to keep their budget in check is one way to solve the affordability crisis. If I'm re-elected, I'm hoping to kick back off. We had a cost control committee that was convened four years ago that was designed to work collaboratively with the school board in order to identify ways that we could save dollars. It doesn't make sense that we have a parks and rec department that mow fields and the school district have their own people that mow the same fields. They plow driveways, we plow driveways. These may not be millions of dollars of savings, but we conservatively went in feeling we could save a half million dollars, no problem. That effort went nowhere because the school district couldn't be bothered to send someone. They were in such disarray. They're not in that position now. I have already spoken with many of the board members, as well as the superintendent, and they feel that's a good idea. So to me, that seems like low-hanging fruit to address the tax increases that keep coming through on a year after year basis. There's the state piece, which is deeper in the weeds. We'll also have to work on that. Those are just some of the ideas. We also have to revisit potentially workforce housing and amending our ordinances in order to require that as well. It's not as simple as just raising the, as we know from developers, there's a limit. Where that threshold is has to be seen, but I think we're going to revisit that.
Excellent. And then also staying in sort of the same vein, this could address affordability, and this could also just address quality of life here in the city. We're going to talk about food policy. And specifically, Burlington had set a goal for itself of producing 10% of its food within the city. What do you think Burlington's current food policy, to the extent that it has one, and then also what more could be done to eliminate hunger and give equal access to nutritious foods for all residents while growing our local economy? And Chip, we're starting with you.
Sure. I'll be honest, when I saw that question, I mean, it has not come up in the six years on the council. So I had to go back and actually look at what our food policy was. It has not been a hot-button issue. We're somewhat a reactionary body, and this is not an issue that has come up. But in sort of thinking about this question, I think the Interval Center has sort of this hidden jewel in the city, and I think continuing to support the mission of the Interval Center and doing what we can as a city to foster both community gardens and others, certainly working with the school, which has a wonderful program of affording free meals to anyone, no questions asked. I think those are the best from a city perspective. It has not been a priority of the city thus far, and I don't see that changing in the upcoming administration. But I think working with our partners that are already doing well in those areas.
Okay. Thanks. Jesse?
Yeah. I think, first of all, we should be taking the approach that when we invest in our local farms, we're really investing in our local economy. And thinking about the fact that those dollars we spend on our farms, especially in a state like Vermont and in a city like Burlington, are going to pay dividends in terms of how much food we can provide for people as a result. So I think that's the first approach to be thinking of. The second thing is, we can make progress, I think, on issues in terms of gleaning and can we gather more of the food that's being right now wasted because it maybe is bruised and it's not quite fit to be at City Market or go to one of the restaurants, but it still is really good food, food that could feed a lot of hungry people. I think we can invest in programs that support those efforts as well. But overall, it's just recognizing how much it can help our economy when we invest in it as a city, and that's the direction I'd like to see us move in.
All right. Thank you both. And now, thinking a little bit about the community culture that you'd like to foster in Burlington if you are elected or re-elected, what do you plan to do to address systemic racism in Burlington? And how can Burlington do a better job of weaving together a community of diverse backgrounds and interests? Starting with you, Jesse?
Yeah. Well, this is, I think everyone in this country has been thinking a lot about this issue, especially in the past couple of years, and really had to question whether we should be doing more, what else we can be doing, no matter what color we are, what background we have. I think no discussion about race can begin without talking about the mural. And I know the mural is a really controversial topic. All I'll say about the mural is it seems to me that when we have an image in such a central place in our city, we have to be thinking about how powerful an image is and how much it can impact anyone who looks at that image, whether they live here, whether they are visiting here, and whether they are thinking about moving here, whether they just moved here from another country. And I don't think, I think this is an opportunity to unite our city, our city together and talk about and listen to the voices of the people who right now are not, are being a little bit left out. I think Infinite, that is one issue that Infinite's campaign has really been supporting, all of our campaigns have, but I do think that that's a really important issue. So I would like to see us talk about, first of all, bringing the community together to talk about what image can go there that is not going to show us who we've been, but is going to show us who we could be as a community, bringing in input from everybody, every member of every community in our city. I think that's a direction to go. And I think, by the way, it's just my opinion, this can be something that we do with goodwill, and it doesn't have to be, we don't have to play a blame game. I think we can bring people together, talk about something, talk about how we can unite our city and move forward.
Great.
And think about who we want to be.
Excellent. And just for viewers quickly, Infinite Cold Pleasure is an independent candidate for mayor. Will be on the ballot along with these folks in March. And Chip, your thoughts?
Sure. Thank you. So the question was about community culture. What can we do to address systemic racism? I think at a minimum, we started down this path, was to continue the work with the council in terms of implicit bias training. Councillor Segal, formerly on the council, was one who insisted on it. We did go through, the council did go through that training, and we're due for yet another training. We also have talked, and I think it's a good idea, to require that training at the commission level as well, because all commissioners, commissioners interact with the public on a regular basis. We've also continued our efforts in terms of expanding. We specifically expanded the police and other commissions to a larger group in order to pull in people from different cultures to address the mural, which is sort of the hot-button topic. I think there's universal acknowledgement, at least on the council, that the mural, something needs to be done with the mural. I don't know that there's any, maybe one or two who feel the mural should stay exactly as it is. I'm not in that camp. We somewhat asked for a report from, rather than tear it down, which was the initial, or take it down, the initial proposal, because it was a complex legal issue. It's not clear to the city attorney nor to the council at the time, who owns the building that the mural is on? Who actually owns the piece of art? And what rights, if any, does the city have to potentially modify the mural? So we are expecting back, and I envision there will be public process and a community discussion about what to do with the mural once we have the facts back from the city attorney in terms of what we can and cannot do with the mural. Thank you.
All right. And it looks like we have a caller on the line, so we will hear a question from them. Hello, you're on the air. Welcome to Channel 17.
I'm on the air. I want to applaud Chip Mason for his leadership in getting through that difficult process of Burlington Telecom that was difficult and new, and I think Chip has done a great job in that area. Now, I'm calling from a remote situation, but has Chip discussed the Champlain Parkway?
No, it has not come up.
Okay. Well, I'll take my answer off the air, okay?
What would you like to know?
Well, I'd like to know what the status is and will it be built in the next two years? Or when can we expect construction to begin?
Okay. Well, thank you for the call. And I would just amend that to say, what are your views on progress so far? And how can we actually move the dial on that? Is it something that should move forward?
Sure.
And yeah, Chip, we'll start with you.
Is that mine? So yes, in my view, we should move the dial. The Parkway needs to be built and as soon as possible. It is a fully permitted project. All permits are in hand. The project has improved dramatically since I joined the council. It has gone, in its 40-year history, from a four-lane highway down to a very limited two-lane, walk-bike friendly, dedicated bike path, lit, bike lanes, traffic cutouts, flashing beacons. It is a very different project. Notwithstanding that, I still hear, I live in the addition, which is a part of the South End where there is significant traffic at 5:00 or anytime there's backup on Pine Street. And what I'm hearing is, build it now. There is not, and the state has made clear, there will not and should not be any changes to the design, timeline, or cost, or state and feds are not going to go along with that. So I appreciate, there may be dispute, there are some in the public who would like Pine Street not to end or other changes to be made, but unfortunately, the time has passed for those changes. The city has made clear, and the state has acknowledged, if the city wants to revisit that and reopen Pine Street after the Champlain Parkway is done, they will allow us to do that. But now is not the time to talk about additional changes to the Parkway.
Okay. Jesse?
Yeah. So the Parkway is something that, and I agree, knocking on doors in the addition, the attitude really is, get the Parkway built. And I do agree that we shouldn't kick the can down the road in terms of some of the very specific parts of the Parkway, in terms of paving Pine Street, in terms of getting more connectivity, walk-by connectivity. And I do think the Parkway project has improved a lot. I also talked to a lot of people who I think need to have their concerns addressed about how traffic is going to be affected across the whole ward. And look, this is something that's going to change. It's going to impact the entire ward and change the face of the ward in a lot of ways. So I do think, I do think we need to move forward on the Parkway, but I do think we need to do it with more, addressing the concerns of the people who still have very serious concerns on the Parkway. I think we can do that. The narrative is that nothing can change, and I'm not, I don't intend to slow down the process if that is, if that is what's happening. I haven't had the chance to talk to the state about it. I will do that as soon as, if I do make it on the council and see where we stand for myself. But I do think we need to address those issues that the addition is having. I do think we need to pave Pine Street. I do think we need more connectivity. But I think we can, we can still move forward in a way that addresses the concerns of everyone in the community, and that's what I will work to do as a member of the council.
All right. Thank you. I think everyone in the city can agree that we need to pave Pine Street, so.
Well, can I just sort of, I mean, not a rebuttal?
We're actually just going to, I'm not sure how we're doing on time, so we're going to move to closing statements. And, well.
I just, I mean, I don't think it's a controversial.
One minute, one minute.
Yeah, no. I mean, I hear the very same concerns that Jesse does. And I think the second piece of this, which was not part of my response due to time limitations, is the Rail Yard Enterprise project, which is a separate project that will basically create a new route from Pine Street behind the hardware store directly to Battery Street. So the concerns that we have all heard from those who live in the King Maple neighborhood who don't want all that traffic, I think, and we are moving full speed ahead on the Rail Yard Enterprise project in terms of scoping. So the hope is, we hear the concerns too, and we're hoping that with the Rail Yard Enterprise project, that will address and ameliorate a number of the concerns from the northern part of Pine Street and that area.
Jesse, would you like to add anything?
No, I think, I think the Parkway is, I think we've said most of our thoughts on it.
All right. Great. Well, we'll move to closing statements now, two minutes each. And Jesse, let's start with you.
Okay. So I guess, first of all, want to say thank you. Chip has been a very worthy opponent, and he's led a very positive campaign, and I think both of us appreciate that that's the direction we've been both taking this campaign. I also want to say, I've never done anything like this before in terms of running for office, in terms of going out and knocking on doors in near-sub-zero weather. And there are a lot of times when you are out there and you're like, why am I doing this? This is really hard. People are, a lot of times, don't want to talk to you. They're a little, I get it, it's late on a weeknight, they don't want to talk. But then you get to somebody who is really, really excited to talk to you, brings you inside, tells you about the concerns they're going through, the concerns they have and the things they're going through, and really gives you the inspiration to keep moving forward. And I just want to say to all those people who have done that on this campaign, thank you for that, because I am continuing to do this because of the inspiration you've given me. And to the rest of the ward, I want to say, I do hope I get the chance to meet all of you before Election Day. And this is what I want the voters of Ward Five most importantly to know. I believe in making progress, and I do believe in moving forward. My first instinct is to fight for the working class in that progress. My first instinct is to fight for the people who are getting left behind while we're making that progress. And that is what I hope to do. But I do have a disposition for taking action and for moving forward. I think there is a way to move forward, though, that is going to involve every member of our community and the different communities we have across the ward and across the city. And I actually think that's the way we're going to make more progress as a city, is when we involve all of those groups. That's how we're actually going to make, Burlington's going to reach its full potential. That's the kind of councillor I want to be, someone who's going to listen, try to understand every perspective, make hard decisions when they need to be made, and always try to take action and move our city forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. Chip, your closing statement?
Sure. Thank you, Morgan, again, and thank you, Jesse. I won't use the full two minutes. I want to echo and thank constituents who are taking the time to educate themselves on the issues that we're discussing, also who are willing to open their door, let you come in, sit down, and talk to you about what's important to them. Campaigning, as much as it is time-consuming, it's also a great opportunity to sort of pull out from the weed. You're so deep in the weeds as a councillor and get a good sense of what's going on. We didn't, unfortunately, tonight, we didn't really get to touch on something that I'm most excited about and hope to carry forward in the next two years, which is Plan BTV South End. Not a huge city issue, but certainly critically important to the South End, and I would say, I would argue to the city as a whole. Development hasn't stopped just because Plan BTV hasn't been finalized. It's continuing, but it's in an odd haphazard manner. I had the privilege of going to Generator earlier today and learning about all the wonderful work that they're doing and have a discussion about how Generator and SIBA fit into Plan BTV South End in terms of sort of preserving the funky arts that exist in the South End and also working on mixed-use housing, which is a little bit of a third rail in the South End. But if I am re-elected, which I ask for your vote, those are the issues that I hope to carry forward most passionately over the next two years. And thank you.
Great. Well, thank you both, and thank you to our viewers here on Channel 17, Town Meeting Television. We really appreciate you being with us tonight, and make sure to vote early at City Hall. And if you can't do that, make sure to get out to the polls on March 6th. It's been great having you, and stay tuned for some more city council forums. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot.
Great. So we just.
Nice to meet you.
Nice, nice to meet you, too.
Thank you, Karen.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Where do you want me to sit?
It's up to you guys.
You want to sit in the middle? I'll sit on the end.
The other ones aren't working.
In case I gotta run quickly. Flip that somewhere.
Clip it on the other side, actually, if you can, because you're gonna face this way.
I don't want to hide my tie.
Nope.
You want people to know that you're wearing a tie? If you'd like, I'll just tell them.
I'll take the sweater off. It's hotter than these lights.
Forgot how to tie it today.
Add some dignity to the group, right?
You want to do it?
Yeah.
It's so warm outside, you don't really even need a sweater.
No.
Well, it's always warm in here with these lights, but.
Sometimes I wear my.
Oh, can we get one more?
One last time before I put my.
No, you're gonna have a few more ties.
Someone brought their own.
It's not a, this is not gonna last.
This is old gold.
Yes. Is this yours?
We're recycling that.
Do you like those? Those are my favorite pens.
The gel pens, I do.
Yeah, well, I'm left-handed.
Us lefties.
Yeah. I have to do something that doesn't go on.
Because we push and write each call, so then we're likely writing each letter we do.
So what Alex, who's directing, has said is, look into the camera with the light on. I've been telling people to look at, direct their answers to me, but apparently, it's better if you look into the camera with the light on. Two minutes for an answer. I'll rotate who goes first. Start with opening statements, and with closing statements, obviously, we'll get through as many.
Really?
Yeah, you know.
Oh, come on, Morgan, let's be, let's be a little more creative than that.
We're gonna get through as many of these questions as we can, but I'll just kind of, been going a little bit in a random order, if we have time, or if it feels topical, I'll try and work in some ballot questions. Good evening, and welcome back to Channel 17, Town Meeting Television. We are here with our second City Council forum of the night, and we have three candidates for the Ward 6 seat, and we will be speaking with all of them in a moment, so I'd like to introduce them now. We have Charles Simpson, a progressive. We have incumbent City Councillor Karen Paul, a Democrat, and we have Joel Fitzgerald, a Republican. Thank you all for being here. And we will start off with opening statements. And Charles, I'm gonna kick it to you, two minutes.
Sure. Well, thank you very much, Channel 17, and thank you, my colleagues here, for this opportunity to discuss some of the issues. I've been a resident of Burlington for about 20 years, and got involved in activism in 2004, when we had a, helped organize a Poets for Peace conference at Contoys, and been very active in things ever since. I'm a retired professor of sociology and urban affairs at State University of New York in Plattsburgh. And what I've, what I've seen, really, is a city which has prioritized the needs of developers and the tourist industry over the needs of residents. I'll give you a couple of quick examples. Look at the case of the redesign of City Hall Park. Instead of putting a toddler play area, a bathroom, a place for seniors to play chess, and to congregate, what the city has chosen to do, and spend $3 million to do it, is to build a garish, lighted, pulsating fountain in the middle of it, paving a third of the, of the park, cutting down perhaps 30% of the trees, creating an amphitheater. The whole idea, really, is to lure tourists into the city, and not to meet the needs of residents. Second is the demolition of 200 homes around the city's airport, which unfortunately, the incumbent Karen Paul to my right, was instrumental in crafting. That is to say, a plan which opens the gate to military aircraft of very loud, generating very loud noises, which has caused, which has made 200 homes unlivable. And now we're moving on to a new aircraft, which is going to make 3,000 more homes unlivable.
All right. Thank you. Karen, it's your turn next, so you can use your time to respond, or you can just give us your opening statement. Go ahead.
Well, I think I, I would hope that I might be able to do a little bit of both. I'll try to, in the two minutes that I have. So my name is Karen Paul. I am the incumbent City Councillor from Ward 6. I was born in Burlington, born in Ward 6, and both my mother and my grandmother were also born in Burlington. My husband Mark and I have three children, Andrew, Adam, and Caroline, who have all attended, or are continuing to attend Burlington Schools. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Ward 6 as your City Councillor. I'll focus on three things that I bring to the office, and what I feel qualifies me to serve, and that is experience, leadership, and passion. I bring significant and effective experience in government, even prior to serving on the City Council, professional experience and expertise as a CPA, and with a career in finance, and experience in the nonprofit sector, advocating for children, seniors, and tackling social challenges that we have in our community. I believe these experiences show a track record of proven leadership and civic involvement in this, in the community. I've led on issues ranging from quality of life, economic development, and fiscal stability. And perhaps even more important than both of those, I bring passion to the role. Passion and a proven record of listening to residents, and a deep, broad, and long connection with the residents that I serve. I am always available and very responsive to people's needs, and am communicating with residents all the time. My philosophy is just simply fiscal responsibility and stability. I believe it is from that posture that we can keep taxes as low as possible, and take care of many of the social needs that we have in this community.
All right. And because your opponent did invoke you in his opening statement, I'd give you a minute to respond to what was said.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that. So unfortunately, this is sort of part of a pattern that Charles seems to like doing, which is to say things that are not factually correct. The issue of the airport and the 200 homes that have been destroyed was actually started long, long before I was a City Councillor, was actually started under the Sanders administration, was the FAA home buy program. If, if anyone, including either one of my opponents, would like to check the Board of Finance, meeting, minutes, meetings, and minutes, as well as the tapes that are all available, they would know that over the past several years, I have been a leading proponent in stopping the home buy program. So to say that I crafted it is, is not true, and I really, really wish that, through this debate, that we would stick with the facts, and, and just be honest. Thank you.
All right. And Joel, your opening.
Okay. Hello, my name is Joel Fitzgerald. I'd like to start off with a plug for my children that are out of state, my two oldest ones. Hi, guys. They're born here, educated here, couldn't get a job here, so they're listening tonight. Thank you to Channel 17 for allowing my fellow candidates and myself the opportunity to speak here this evening. My decision to run now for my local governing City Council has been a serious consideration for quite some time. Every citizen who chooses to run for public office is inspired by something he or she believes can be repaired, and a recent incident, I believe, made a lot of neighbors very powerless, and indeed propelled me to run for the current opening seat. I believe I have a lot of skills and knowledge to offer the residents of Ward 6, and I would like the opportunity to be of greater service to my community. If elected, I promise to see people as people, and not by party. Thank you.
All right. Great. And we are seeing the phone lines light up, which is excellent. If you'd like to ask a question of any of the candidates, the number is 802-862-3966. So we're gonna kick things off by going to the phones. Hello, you're on the air. Welcome to Town Meeting Television.
Oh, hello. My name is Paco De Francis, and I have a question for Councillor Paul regarding.
Please direct questions to all of the candidates.
Regarding the City Council. Oh, all right, to all the councillors.
Yeah, this is a question that they'll all have the opportunity to address.
Yeah. Okay, sure. Yeah, this was pertaining to the Burlington Telecom vote, but, you know, obviously, I'd be interested to know what the other councillors had, you know, would do in that situation.
All right, ahead.
During the vote, the, when Schur's was eliminated the first time in September 29th, it became apparent that the Two Cows organization, there was a, there were millions of shares that were sold by insiders at Two Cows, you know, the parent company, the Ping. During this time, I made that apparent to the City Council and to Councillor Paul, and it was noted, and.
What's your question, please?
That idea was dismissed, that that was an issue. And then what had happened.
Paco, what's your question, please?
Yeah, so, and then, so the, there's a lawsuit now with Two Cows, so how would the councillors choose to, you know, kind of, you know, better vet, you know, other risks with, with companies that are making bids to acquire city assets?
So how would you vet companies trying to buy city assets? And we'll actually start with you, Councillor Paul.
Okay. So I'm not familiar at all with the situation that he referred to in terms of Two Cows. We've, you know, I think that that did happen after the Burlington Telecom decision was made. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand what the question is. Is this a general question?
It sounds like, yes. I mean, for our purposes, it's a general question.
Well, I think we, you know, we all, as City Councillors, try to do our due diligence, each in our own way. You know, I know for myself, I use the skills that I have as an accountant to, to look at the pro formas that were given to us, and with the, in the case of Schur's, being that it was a privately traded, a private, a private company, not a publicly traded company, I actually did go and ask to sign a confidentiality agreement to be able to view their audited financials. That's how I have gone about vetting that, and I've also looked to other City Councillors who go about their due diligence in other ways, and learning from them as well.
Okay. Joel?
Well, on that deal, I think, I think at the time, we got the best deal that we possibly could. It was a long, drawn-out process. I was a little surprised that, when you recused yourself in the night of the vote, that did surprise me, and I, and I did speak of it, that it did surprise a lot of our neighbors, and, and I think it put, I put everything, I think it put a lot of things at risk, and I just think that we didn't do a great job there, you know, with, with any of the companies that were involved with the bidding process.
Okay. Karen, one minute to respond.
Thank you very much. So in the city charter, Article 46, Section 133, if you want to take a look at it, is the information regarding conflicts of interest. The city charter asks that if you, if you have a conflict of interest, that at the earliest opportunity, that you should disclose that. I did disclose that. The charter actually doesn't require that you disclose what the nature of the conflict of interest is, but I did do that. I went that additional step, and let people know that I had a professional conflict of interest. It was through the employer that I had, over the weekend before that vote, and the appearance of a conflict of interest had come to my attention in work that I was doing, and I brought that to the councils and to the public's knowledge as soon as I was absolutely possible, absolutely able to do so.
Okay, thank you. And Charles, your response on the general question of how you might have handled the Burlington Telecom sale, or how generally you would approach the sale of city assets and vetting potential buyers?
Sure. I would have taken it very seriously, this principal criteria, which was to keep ownership and control local. And I certainly would not have participated in a midnight deal to, to approve the sale of the asset, which is very important to our economic well-being. We need broadband, we need inexpensive broadband. But I wouldn't have approved its sale without any written documents beyond midnight, after the public had left. You know, this is behind-the-scenes shenanigans, and I would not have participated in this. Nor would I have said, we have to sell it now. I would have waited for due deliberation and a rational analysis of the new bid that came up at that time.
All right. Well, thank you for that, and we have more callers, so we're gonna stay with them. Hello, you're on the air. Welcome to Town Meeting Television.
Hello.
I'm sorry, your, your connection's not great. Try one more time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Great. I'm calling because, you know, I'm a little bit more of a posse, you know, because I love work.
Oh, you know, I'm really sorry, but the connection's just, I don't think good enough for the air. We do appreciate you calling, but we're gonna take our next call. Sorry about that. Hello, you're on the air. Welcome to Town Meeting Television.
Hi, did I get through?
Yes, you did. You're on the air.
Great, thanks so much. Just didn't know for a second there. I've got just a quick question for you guys. It's kind of multifaceted. Could you describe how long you've lived in Ward 6? And each of you, I guess, will own your home in Ward 6. And just go into a little bit of what specifically kind of attracted you to live in Ward 6, and why do you feel you're better qualified to represent your neighbors in our ward than your opponents?
That is a great question. Thank you very much, and we will get right to it. Joel, you're first. Go ahead.
Okay, so I moved to Ward 6. Actually, I moved there because I worked there, and my daughter went to school there, and it was a passing of my wife that actually made me move there because of my job and my child's school. I am, I came to Burlington because I loved Burlington, and I played hockey there, I visited the restaurants, and I, and I fell in love with it at a very early age, and, and I decided that it would be a place for me when I grew up and was able to afford a home. So when, when I, when I went to look for a home, I did move to Burlington, and then I did move to Ward 6 about 10 years ago. I think. I did move to Burlington. And then I did move to Ward 6 about 10 years ago. I think why I believe why I would better serve my ward over the other candidates is, is I'm just a regular guy. I'm a regular working guy. You know, we pay taxes and we work hard. And we're just, I'm a regular class people, just like my neighbors. And I think I fit in well with my neighbors. And I just think that gives me advantage over everybody else. I'm involved in the neighborhood every day.
All right, great. Thank you for that. And moving on, Charles Simpson, to you.
Yeah, I've lived in Burlington for 20 years. I, we, we had an issue with my family. My mother-in-law needed a place to live and her, and her husband. And so we were able to build a house that had an in-law apartment, something that I'm very much in favor of. And so it was one of the last few empty lots in the city, and we were able to purchase it and build a house there. It also fit in with the educational needs of my daughter because it was more of a diversity of educational facilities in the Burlington area. I think I'm, I'm certainly qualified because of my deep involvement in community activities. I've been on the Steering Committee for NPA 6 for five years, very active in religious activities. And I have been very active in all sorts of social improvement groups, everything from the Pine Street Coalition, to the Coalition for a Living City, to the Open Space Group. So on that basis, I think I'm qualified.
Karen?
Thank you. So that's a great question. In my case, it's easy for me to figure out how long I've lived there because it's pretty much my whole life. I did go to college out of state and spent one year right after college working in New York, but rather quickly came back. I, you know, I think going away for a couple of years got me to understand really the beauty of Burlington, the beauty of the landscape that we have in this queen city, and the beauty of our ward. You know, I like the closest to downtown, walking to school. My children went to the same schools that I went to as a child. And when I walk the streets of Ward 6, it's like being in my own backyard. So I have a long history in Ward 6, a long record of service in Ward 6 and in Burlington. And what I believe qualifies me to represent my neighbors more than my opponents is my deep understanding over many, many years of what is on the mind of people in Ward 6. I've lived in one section of Ward 6, I've lived in another. I've lived near the institutions, I've lived farther away. The experience that I have can't be duplicated by running for office. It's something that comes from within, and it's something that is gathered over many years and many, and decades of getting to know the people who live in Ward 6. And I will be honored to continue to serve.
Okay, great. Thank you all for that. And we are going to stay with the phones because they are blowing up. Thank you, viewers. It's 802-862-3966 if you have a question for the candidates. So here we go. Hello, you're on the air. Welcome to Town Meeting Television.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, part of the job of a city councillor is communicating with their constituents and controlling the quality of life in those areas. I'd just like to know, you know, what they would do to communicate with us that live here, and how we'll be able to get ahold of them if need be.
Okay, great. And I believe we're starting with Karen on this one?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to. So that's a wonderful question because you're absolutely right. The caller is absolutely correct. Communicating with your constituents is really job number one. Being able to, it's really the only way that you know what's on their minds is if you're communicating with them. Since I was elected in 2008, I have been on front porch forum with a preview of every council meeting. I haven't missed one. And people have told me that that makes them feel extremely dialed in to what is going on in city government. I have, since being elected, have had a blue newsletter that has gone out to constituents several times a year, for those people who perhaps may not be on social media, and also communicate as often as I can, as well as during council meetings even, in terms of Facebook and Twitter. I do hold coffees at the spot, which is our Ward 6 eatery, and do that several times a year in order to connect with constituents in that way. That is one of the best parts of the job of being a city councillor, is being able to interact with your neighbors and hear what's on their minds.
Okay, great. Joel?
So social media is a great avenue to, to keep in touch with people, what's going on, and surveys, you know, get involved with your community, go to the schools, go to school plays. Last night, I was at a Burlington School, high school basketball game. You know, other than, I just enjoy being out in the community, I went to that. So the other thing is, is just call me up. I'll come visit you. I'll come to your house. I'll come talk to you. I have no problems coming to people's homes, talk to them about the issues, talk about them, what's going on. If they can come to my house, I make a pretty decent cup of coffee, and they can just come to my house and we'll talk about it. Yeah. And last night, I was answering emails at 11:30 last night. Email me. I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Thank you.
Great. Charles?
Yeah, communication is, really shouldn't be top-down. It should be us listening to the constituents. What I'm really frustrated by is the fact that we have a city council that gives two minutes for the public to make a speech. And city council too often has its mind made up ahead of time. So what I would like us to do is something we did in, in the academic world. We had office hours. And if we had offices and places in City Hall where the council could meet, it was set times, I think that would be enormously useful. And of course, yes, I have social, social media, and yes, I would certainly answer the phone if someone called, and I would certainly go out and visit people. But I think we need to do this more structurally. I think the council needs much more resources in terms of office space and staff help. And we need to be able to tell constituents when and where they can meet with us over issues.
Great. Well, I'm going to stay with the phones here because these questions have been excellent. So here we go. Hello, welcome to Town Meeting Television.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. So this, and this, of course, addresses all of the councillors. So as all of you know, some of the UVM campus, as well as Champlain, both reside in Ward 6, which makes us fairly unique in the city. So with that in mind, what specific experiences, as well as relationships, can you all speak to with these institutions, as well as the approach you take in dealing with quality of life issues with the people having to do with these institutions?
Great question. And we'll start with you, Joel. Go ahead.
So, you know, that is a great question. And, you know, it's nice to see Champlain and the University of Vermont stepping up with some financial, financial help with the infrastructure. So we applaud them for that. As far as the housing and the issues that we've been dealing with for years, we are actually, I believe that we're getting closer with conversations to give choices of housing, whether it be students being on campus or off campus. I believe that's a great move forward. My experience working with both is, actually, I live and work in both. So I, the experience for me has always been positive. Because I work there and I live there, I interact with both all the time, and the experience has been positive. And I believe that the conversations that are going on can only expand to partnership for the future.
All right. Charles?
Yeah, I think, let's, let's be frank. The city has not cut a very good deal with UVM at all. There's no solution to our high-rent problem unless we can convince UVM to get 3,000 off-campus students back onto the Trinity campus. And if they did that with student cooperatives, they could cut the cost of room and board for students by half. Instead of that, UVM looks upon housing and food service as a cash cow. And the city simply goes along with this. For example, the latest deal we have essentially passes the, the control of the university parkway to the, to the university, and, and the city pays almost all, or a great part, of the improvement costs for that. So I think we, we just are not standing up to UVM. UVM has, has divined its own interests, or its administration, has not really benefited the students, or I think, unfortunately, the wider community. So I would be much tougher in our dealings with UVM. We've actually cut our pilot, over the last couple of years, we're actually getting less in pilot funds from the universities.
Pilot funds being payments in lieu of tax made by major tax-exempt institutions in the city. To you, Councillor Paul.
Thank you. So first, I just wanted to create, correct again, I think it's, I think it's important that people, that voters have, actually have the facts. And the fact is that Charles just said that virtually all of the expenses are being paid by the city. That is actually not true. We are sharing the expenses for some of the work that's going to be done on University Place with the university. We are not financing it. And that is not coming out of taxpayer dollars. So that's, that I just wanted to mention first. As far as, you know, I think this sort of brings to light approaches that work. And the approach that works the best with the institutions is that they are our valued neighbors. And the way that, the best way to work with valued neighbors is collaboratively. I have a long history of working collaboratively with the institutions, and particularly addressing quality of life issues. I have participated in foot patrols in neighborhoods to deal with late-night noise and walk-by noise. I have been calling landlords since 2009 to deal with noises, incidences, have worked with the university on the Have a Heart campaign, have advocated for the university to actually pay for our foot patrols, which they have agreed, they have done. They're under no obligation to, but they have done it because we've worked collaboratively with them. And I guess the only other thing I did want to mention is that, you know, those are the things that I think benefit Ward 6 greatly, is working collaboratively, not only with our neighbor-to-neighbor, but also with the institutions as our neighbors.
All right. Well, thank you. And because your response invoked Charles, Charles, one minute to respond.
Yeah, universities, and UVM in particular, are fairly hard-nosed in their, in their negotiating with the city. In the latest agreement, for example, there is not a single bed, a new, new student bed on campus, which UVM has committed itself to, not a single one. And yet, the University Place issue was a source of leverage for the city. It could have gotten much more, and it didn't. And instead, it has underwritten much more than half of the, committed itself to much more than half of the cost to rebuild this, this roadway separating the campus from UVM Green.
All right. Well, thank you for that. We're going to move on now to look at some issues surrounding the airport. And so the first question I have on that is, do you believe that Burlington Airport, which is located in South Burlington, but operated by the City of Burlington, do you think that there should be a transition to a regional governance model? What should that look like? And should surrounding communities have more say in key decisions at the airport that are now made in Burlington? And first to you, Charles.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, this is a big issue. I worked very hard to, to get Item 6 onto the ballot, which gives citizens finally a say in airport policy. And the incumbent, unfortunately, seems to want it both ways. She wants to say she's, was co-chair of the Strategic Planning Committee on the airport, but at the same time, does not want to take any responsibility for a decision to bring 18 F-35s to the airport, which, as I say, will increase the noise umbrella. The City of Burlington has unfortunately a colonial relationship with South Burlington. It calls all the shots, and South Burlington has to pay the penalty, pays a penalty in terms of housing loss, in terms of tax, shrunken tax base. And this is something that we simply have to end. And we have to end it with a regionalization of our airport. The airport is, is fairly well-run within it. I think it's quite an attractive airport. But its relationship with the Pentagon, with the Air Force, has been a disaster for the city. We don't even take one dime of lease payment. We get more money from Skinny Pancake at the airport than we do from the Pentagon.
Okay. Councillor Paul?
Okay. Well, I was the co-chair, and I'm proud of the work that we did. I was the co-chair of the Strategic Planning Committee for the Burlington International Airport a few years ago. And we grappled with many issues to do with, with the airport. One thing that a lot of people don't know is that the FAA has only been around about half of the, has been in existence, only about half of the time that the Burlington International Airport has been in existence. And prior to the FAA, the taxpayers of Burlington invested millions of dollars in the airport. Another little-known fact is that the Burlington Department of Public Works actually installed the first runway at the airport. You know, if we're going to make a change in governance, I think what we have to do, the first question that we should be asking is, what is, what is it that we hope to solve by making this change? I think we need to define that first. And from the committee, when we did discuss this, we know that there are others who want a seat at the table. Burlington taxpayers have spent, have invested millions of dollars in the airport. And one of the members of the Airport Strategic Planning Committee was the former CEO of US Airways, Edwin Kalodny, who very appropriately said that those who want a seat at the table, you know, need to have skin in the game. If that is the case, and, and there are communities in our region who want a seat at the table and are prepared to come with skin in the game, I think we should have that conversation. And I would be happy to work with anyone on, on having that conversation.
You have some additional time. Do you want to reply, respond to anything that Charles said?
Sure, that would be great. So the first thing is that it's been said that the Air Force does not contribute a dime. Well, that is not true. Our, they spend about $2 million providing the airport with fire protection. And I think that's a lot more than a dime. It's a lot of money. And it's a commitment that the Guard has to the City of Burlington, and for that matter, to the City of South Burlington. The other issue that someone, that one of my opponents had just simply had said, was that there is a shrunken tax base. This, the, the airport pays property taxes, and-
Does it pay property tax to Burlington?
No, to South Burlington, because it is in South Burlington. So there is a payment to the City of South Burlington, a rather substantial one. Thank you.
All right. Joel, your perspective on regional governance at the airport?
I think the, I think the conversation of issues should be open. I think it should be receptive, but I don't think that we should give anything away on that.
All right. Thank you for that. And I wanted to, because we're talking about the airport, and because we touched, you guys touched on it in your responses, wanted to talk about one of the advisory questions on the ballot, which Charles mentioned. That's Question 6. And it asks, shall the voters of Burlington request the cancellation of the placement of the F-35 at Burlington International Airport, and request instead low-noise level equipment with proven safety records and appropriate for a densely populated area? And starting with you, Councillor Paul, go ahead.
Sure. Just wanted to, just, just for the record, that's not exactly what the question is that's going to appear on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
That's sort of a synopsis. The question that's going to appear on the ballot is, is a lot longer. So, you know, when the, there were a number of citizens who worked very hard, Charles among them, to get signatures, to be able to bring this to the council and ask us to put it on the ballot. I have a great deal of respect for people who stand outside in the cold weather and get signatures. And because of that, even though I, I do think that the ballot question is misleading, I did vote in favor of putting the ballot question, which was legal and had the approval of our city attorney, I did agree, or did vote in favor of putting it on the ballot as is. And, you know, it's an advisory question. If the, if the ballot item is successful, and it is, and is successful in Ward 6, then if reelected, I would certainly advocate to take action on that advisory question.
Could you say anything, you have more time. Could you say anything about what that means?
Well, the question, you know, the question is a little bit convoluted. It says that, it talks about support for the Guard and support for the mission of the Guard, which is protecting the citizens. And then it asks, as you had just mentioned, about the, about the basing of the F-35s and looking for alternative low-noise equipment in its place.
Sure. Sure. I guess, do you support the basing of the F-35 at Burlington International Airport?
Based on the information that I have, I will be voting, now let me remember.
Yeah.
I will be voting no on Question 6.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel?
So, is the shortened question, do I support the basing of the F-35s?
Yes. And also, if you have thoughts on the question as it appears on the ballot, this is your time to talk about that.
Well, I did, I was at the meeting on the night that the council, it all went down. I don't agree with the way that the council voted. I think it opened up a lot of issues for votes upcoming. I do support, okay, I do support the basing of the F-35s. And I just, I believe that it's going to bring jobs, sustained jobs to the region. So I do support it, yes.
All right. Thank you. Charles?
Yeah. A couple of things. What I meant about taxes is, of course, when you destroy 200 homes, the value of those homes for tax purposes is gone. So that's what South Burlington has lost. In terms of the ballot item, it's important to realize that a citizen initiative, while only advisory, is a sharp rebuke to city council for not taking a stewardship role in this very important area where they could be protecting children against cognitive impairment from loud noises. And they could be, they could have protected a viable community with its own private, with its own primary school, where children were able to walk, where adults were hoping to maintain their homes into old age. They didn't do that. And so it took 3,000 citizens to sign a petition to get this onto the ballot. These planes, of course, are $150 million each. The 18 will cost $2.7 billion. If Burlington sends a yes message, signs says yes on this ballot item 6, this will send a national message that we have different criteria, we have different values than simply the militarization of our entire society. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize that we're not going to be able to get to all of the callers that we have, but we are short on time. So I would like to go to closing statements. And two minutes for each of you. This is your opportunity to address the voters of Ward 6 one final time and tell them why they should vote for you. We will start with Joel.
Okay. If elected, I will do my best to work with you on these and other city issues to the, in the most transparent and collaborative way I can. I will seek and listen to the collaborative voice of my ward and bring that voice to every council meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Charles, go ahead.
Yeah. I think we really need a change in both city government across the board and also in Ward 6. One of the issues that we didn't quite get to, but I heard it discussed in the Ward 5 discussion, was the Champlain Parkway. And it's a good example of how the city gets it wrong and how the council supports the city getting it wrong. What this highway will do, 150-foot wide swath, will go right through the middle of our preciously small industrial area, precluding new small businesses, jobs, and tax revenue from that area, because it will have simply taken over much of the center of that industrial district. This is just short-sighted. Just because we're reaching for maybe $39 million with the federal funds, we will end up damaging ourselves. So it's one thing after another, where the city has gone for something big, often subsidizing it, as the case with the downtown mall, subsidizing it to the tune of almost $22 million. This is not what we need. What we need, rather, is to put the citizens first. And we need a livable city as a criteria for our, all of our decisions. And one way to do that is to listen to the citizens, to bring them on board, to put decisions about commission appointments and board appointments back to the NPAs, let the NPAs begin a conversation before the decisions are made, at the beginning of things such as the memorial auditorium discussion, not afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Paul, to you.
So thank you. And thank you to Channel 17, and thank you, Morgan. You get a lot of credit here. Thank you for moderating and doing a great job. So over the last month or so, I've been to over 800 homes in Ward 6 and have spent a lot of time talking with voters. I am so heartened by the kindness and the warmth and the welcome that so many voters have given me at their door. The way that they've opened their door, have spoken with me, have shared with me their thoughts, their dreams, their hopes, and what's on their mind. One of the best parts about being a city councillor is the door-to-door experience. And I learn so much from you when I do that. I'm grateful to the many people who are supporting my reelection, including the now well-over-200 voters in Ward 6 who have agreed to endorse me with their name on my website. And that number is growing daily. These are people from all parties, all points of view, have agreed with me on some issues, have disagreed with me on some issues. But on balance, feel that I am the most qualified person to lead them for the next two years. I believe that I bring a record of experience, a proven leadership, and passion, a lot of passion that I bring to this role, and which I believe are the reasons why the voters of Ward 6 should reelect me. It's been an honor to serve, and I ask for your vote on March 6 so that I can continue to serve this ward and the city as your city councillor. You inspire me every day. I'll look forward to seeing you at the polls. Thank you.
All right. And thank you to all three of our candidates. Again, that's progressive Charles Simpson, incumbent Democrat, Karen Paul, and Republican Joel Fitzgerald. We really appreciate our viewers for tuning in and also for their calls. It really helped inform this debate. Again, you're watching Channel 17, Town Meeting Television. This has been our Ward 6 Candidate Forum. Thank you all, and stay tuned because we got a couple more coming right at you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome back to Channel 17 Town Meeting Television. I'm Morgan True and I'm here with the candidates for Ward Seven City Councilor. We have another candidate forum for you here so you can familiarize yourself with the candidates and their positions. We have incumbent Democrat Progressive Ali Jang and independent James Loop III. And we are going to go ahead and get started here with opening statements and I will go to you first, Ali.
Thank you very much, Morgan, for having me and thank for everybody watching here tonight with us. And yes, my name is Ali and I am the current City Councilor for Burlington Ward Seven. I immigrated to this country in 2007 and since then I've been working for the Burlington School District. I was elected six months ago to represent Ward Seven. And my time at the council has been just great incredibly by learning a lot about the city and also by contributing meaningfully. Thank you.
All right, James?
Hi, my name is James Loop and I'm running for Ward Seven City Council. I own a couple of small businesses locally. I own Pamper Path on North Avenue and I work with my partner at a real estate office in downtown Burlington. So I feel that I have a lot of experience with housing, also managing budgets and business. So I'm really looking forward to bringing that experience to the City Council. And also, my parents recently retired. They've been longtime Burlington area residents and I think working with them on that whole process, I can also help seniors in our community transition into retirement and bring some of those strategies that I worked with them to the council. Thank you.
Great. And reminder to our viewers, if you have questions for either of the candidates, give us a call, 802-862-3966. And to kick things off here, we are going to go to the phones because we have a caller. Hello and welcome to Town Meeting Television. You're on the air.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Dale Tulson from Ward Seven, which is the ward that these two gentlemen are running to represent. My question goes back about nine days. At a City Council meeting nine days ago, there was an issue brought up about Burlington basically investing into Burlington Telecom and trying to stay involved within the situation. Eleven of the 12 councilors voted yes on the subject. The candidate from Ward Seven voted no. I would like the candidate from Ward Seven to answer his reason for voting no and the other candidate to answer how he would have voted on the issue.
All right, great. Thank you for that question, Dale. And they are both candidates. Ali's the incumbent and current City Councilor. And James, we will start with you. How would you have voted on that issue?
So I would have voted yes. So basically what that resolution was is to whether we could reinvest those funds. And in order to do that, we needed to go to the Public Utility Commission to see if that was an option for Burlington to reinvest some of those proceeds from the sale of Burlington Telecom. And that was basically the question. So I think that's something we want to keep moving forward with, seeing if that's a good option. I think we definitely want to see if that carried interest, if there's any risks involved, and if it's a good option. But I think it's worth asking the question, so I would have voted yes.
All right, Councilor Jang?
Yep, so I mean, thank you so much for your question. And this, again, I will make sure that everyone will understand my position on that. And my position on BT specifically has been always that it needs to come to, we wanted to make sure that we leave a legacy to our children by making sure that Burlington Telecom is operated by Burlingtonians and also managed by Burlingtonians. Now, that did not happen. We had an option to have a carried interest in order to us, for us to stay on the game. But the options were very limited for Burlington. Having one board member at the seat doesn't make any sense in my own sense. To me, with everything that is going on in this country, everything that is going on in the state and specifically around Burlington Telecom, we need to cash out. To take what we sold it, let's cash out and then with that money, we will be able to invest it in something else that's greater and that has more invest return for the Burlington, for the Burlingtonians. Reason why I voted no. I knew that it doesn't matter my vote yes or no, it will pass. So I wanted to just again say that the whole process since it started, it has not been very well vetted. It has not been a great process and the best option for Burlington is to move forward by cashing out and then with that money, we will be able to allocate it in all the things that we need such as having a library at the New North End, having a community health center at the New North End. Thank you again for your question and those are the reasons why I did not vote yes on that.
All right, and thank you both. And we're going to stay with the phones as we have another caller. Hello and welcome to Town Meeting Television.
Thank you. My question to the candidates is where do you stand on the F-35 question and what's your opinion of the wording of the ballot question?
All right, thank you. And we'll bring that to the councilors. Again, this is a question that broadly asks whether residents support canceling the placement of the F-35 and instead requesting some noise mitigation stuff or another mission, another Air Force mission to be brought to Burlington instead of the F-35. Again, there has been some controversy around the wording of that and so we will start with you, Councilor Jang. What are your thoughts?
Thank you. So basically you're asking about the ballot question, item question, that's number six and it is an advisory of the basing of F-35 in the Burlington International Airport. So as we all know that the Vermont National Guard, the military, has recently clarified that no jobs will be lost if the F-35s are based somewhere else, right? The process is very far along, but our neighbors continue, have already expressed their opposition on the basing of the F-35 in the Burlington International Airport. After careful consideration, we have concluded that the goal of a healthy, safe and sustainable city, the community, we are not constantly wanting to have the basing of the F-35 in Burlington International. So I would be voting yes on that ballot item question because when we talk about sound of freedom, it's not exactly with so much noise. We also know that there are so many different consequences that that noise and also something else that will affect the well-being of the resident in here. It is imperative, it is very important as elected officials, also leaders of this community, the first thing we want to preserve is the well-being and safety of our resident. And to me, it is not bringing that to this community and the surrounding communities.
All right, James?
So I've been door knocking and asking a lot of the community what they think on this issue. I've gotten a lot of feedback from friends and neighbors and I think overwhelmingly what I've heard in Ward Seven is they support the guard. We really haven't heard another mission. I've heard a lot of people talk about an alternative mission, an alternative plane. But what really concerns me is there's 1,100 jobs that the guard supplies to the area and I think that's critical. We want to keep those jobs. All three members of the Vermont delegation fought to bring the F-35s to Vermont. I know there's concerns over the noise level. I know part of our politicians have gone down to Florida, listened to the noise. I don't think there's been an opportunity in Burlington to really hear the noise and that's a concern. But overwhelmingly, I think Ward Seven supports the guard. And I'm also a little upset about the language and I've heard from Ward Seven voters that it's a little misleading and there's a lot of concerns. And I think on the council level, I would have voted to change that wording. And that means maybe the petitioners would have gone to court and I think that's okay. But I would have liked it to move further and the language been really clear on the ballot so the voters can make a really clear decision. So just to clarify, I'll be voting no.
All right, thank you both. And again, we have another caller on the line, so we're going to stay with that. Hello and welcome to Town Meeting Television. You're on the air.
Hi, I agree with Mr. Loop on that issue. Let's see.
What was your question?
I'm talking about the bike lane issue because we did have a language change after submitting a question by petition and, you know, despite Morell and Chabot's faulty dishonest so-called data notwithstanding the majority of the votes, then said noted by saying so much.
Ma'am, if you could, what is your question, please?
In the last election cycle, Ali Jang said, was asked if he would vote with his constituents against the bike lanes even if he did not agree with them. And he stated that he would.
Could you please address your question to both candidates?
My question for Mr. Loop is will you vote with your constituents?
It's a question for both candidates, please.
Even if you disagree with them. And my question for Ali is why didn't you keep your promise?
Okay, so the question is, will you vote with your constituents? And we will go first to James.
I think that's a concern that I've heard from a lot of Ward Seven residents and it's certainly, one of the reasons why I'm running, I talked to Ali about a couple of votes and was disappointed. And then when I gave him the opportunity later to discuss it, I felt like I was brushed off. So I think that's why I felt passionate to get involved, to make sure that Ward Seven's voice was heard and I will continue to work to make sure Ward Seven's view is heard. And I also think it's really important that you work with the council as a whole. And I'm running as an independent because I feel passionately that bipartisanship is really important on the council and we want to keep moving forward.
All right, great. Ali?
Yep, so I mean, during my campaign six months ago, I made it very clear that what we want to do in this city is to promote healthy, active lifestyle. That could not be happening with having four lanes and those four lanes were not safe and also the North Avenue were not, is not welcoming. Now, it is very welcoming. Now, it is also responding to the safety needs and also concern that so many residents have been expressing about. Now, when you tell me that I told a couple of people that I would be voting on what the New North Enders want, I am telling you, what I trust is the door knocking and also the people that I connected with. There might be other data, there might be anything, but before I run and won over 62% of the vote, I almost knocked at every single door in Ward Seven. Every single door. And I talked to almost every single person.
Ma'am, if you could refrain from interrupting the candidate, we'd appreciate that. Otherwise, I'll have to cut you off.
Exactly. Now, North Avenue is more welcoming and people are using the bike lane every single day. As a leader, that I will be continuing to promote healthy lifestyle for every single resident in Burlington.
All right, thank you both. And we are going to stay with the phones. We've got another caller here. Please keep them coming. If you'd like to ask a question of the candidates, the number is 802-862-3966. Give us a shout. Hello and welcome to Town Meeting Television. You're on the air.
Hi, I wanted to just, two things if I could. One is as the Ward Seven voters say that I, I know change comes hard to a lot of people, but I think the bike lane change is a good one and people will grow to really like it.
Sure, if you could just...
I have one follow-up question for Mr. Loop if I could.
Please direct a question that both candidates could answer, if that's possible.
Okay, okay. So I guess I would say, what are your three top needs that you see in the ward in terms of services that you would work to bring or improve? And that would be my question. Could I ask one little thing also, follow-up?
Let's stick with that. That's a lot there. It's the three top needs that the candidates see in the ward. Let's get them started with that. Ali, to you, the three top needs you see?
Definitely. And I think one of them, I am doing an incredible job, it is to make sure that the Ward Seven residents are connected to the city. I am the only counselor that are providing updated, healthy updated items through Front Porch Forum. I also started a dumpling every other Thursday with my constituents. They show up strong. And last time, we held it at Simple Roots. You know, it was to improve the communication, which did not exist before I was at the council. Even Ward Four take my, what I update on Ward Seven and they take it and share it with Ward Seven. So New North End has been forgotten for a very long time. And that's one, to improve the communication. The second thing, we have over 2,000 Ward Seven residents that are using community health centers. And they all drive so much long time to get there and sometimes they seek to spread the germs. We need a specific area where we can have a community health center. Over 2,000 will be able to access those. Just last, two weeks ago, I talked to an elder, elderly and she was telling me how she drove all the way to the Fletcher Free Library. She could not find a parking and she had to drive back to her house with the books. We need a specific area, designated area where we can have a community library.
And your third item?
That's the third item. The first one, to improve the communication. The second one is to bring things such as the community health center and the third one, to bring also a community library in the Burlington.
Thank you. James, your top three priorities should you be elected?
Well, one of the biggest items I've heard when door knocking is affordability. I think there's a broad spectrum of not only seniors, but the middle class that are really disappointed that maybe, and I hear that maybe they might have to move. So I think we need to look at sustainability in the city with the budgets. I think we're on track. We're doing much better. When, just a few years ago, there was a $31 million lawsuit against the city and we're struggling with the bond rating. So I think we're on the right track. It's improving, but I still think there's a lot to do on the housing front. I think we can do a lot to make it more affordable and bring about more units to relieve that pressure. So the affordability is the main thing. Also, I think I agree with Ali, transportation. But how I would address that is I'd like to see more transportation to services we already have. By adding services to the New North End, I'm worried about what kind of tax burden that would already put on our city. So I think improving access to the library and definitely to the community health centers and to Fletcher Allen is critical to seniors. And also, what I've heard from residents is that their kids need better access to parks. So I'd love to see maybe a free loop to help them access those services.
Great, all right. And let's stay in that vein of affordability and just talk about the perspective that you bring to the City Council. And I'm wondering if you could both tell us about someone who you know that is a renter or on food stamps, having trouble paying medical bills, making less than $15 an hour and how knowing that person, having that relationship or even experiences you may have had in your personal life... have had in your personal life, how that will inform your role on the council, should you be elected? And James, we'll start with you.
So I have a lot of people come in to pamper pet, and we chat a lot of the time when they're dropping off their dogs. And I look forward to it at least once a week. And if I can't do it every week, I do it every couple of weeks. And just to see what's going on. Or maybe I stop in the Bagel Bakery, and I'll chat for a little bit to see what's going on in the community. So, and I think there's a lot of people that are making affordable wages. And I hear the struggles they're going through. So I think when I'm getting that feedback, and when I'm on the council, I'll turn to them and ask, what can we do better? What are our successes? What are we not doing well right now, and how we can improve? So I think by partnering and having that access to the community, and also, people can call me, and they've been doing that the last two weeks. So thank you very much. So that feedback is critical to going to the council and having that to hopefully improve our community.
Okay. Thank you. And Ali, what relationships or experiences with people who may be struggling in the city will inform your next term on the council, if you should be elected?
Thank you. And I just want to also to clarify that when we talk about affordability, it is not a North Avenue problem. It is a Burlington problem. Just want to make sure that it's very clear here. All right. So me, as a new American, I work directly with the most vulnerable populations in Burlington, right? Not only that I know people who are renters, not only that I know people, I witness people being evicted. I help the people to apply for childcare subsidy. I help them to apply for food stamps. I help them even to apply for housing assistance. That's the specific reason with us, many people at the council may not have an understanding of what those struggles are. I am also a person with lived experiences. As a new American, I interact every single day with the most vulnerable in our community and also in our school. Just to tell you, reason why I started to serve before the council at CVYO, Champlain Valley Office of Economic Services, to understand the knowledge and also the struggles of many people in here. I am bringing that perspective every single day to everything that I do at the council, at my services in what's CVYO, as well as at Rice for Democracy. The struggle is real. Many people who don't understand them won't be able to address it effectively.
All right. We're going to do one more call-in and then move to closing statements. And so, here we go. Welcome to Town Meeting Television. You're on the air. What's your question for our Ward 7 candidates?
Thank you. My question is for both. The question is, will either candidate make it a priority, if elected to the council, to bring some type of enforcement of the bikes that ride wherever they feel like it? And they seem to think they can take over the city. I know the police department's position on that is basically no interest. So it would be nice to know if either candidate supports some type of enforcement before we do have a tragedy. The other question is more towards Ali.
Actually, if you don't have a question for both candidates, we'll just stick with the one that you had. But thank you for that. It's a great question, and I will put it to the candidates now. So James, bike traffic violation enforcement, is that a priority for you? And do you think the city should be doing more of that?
I think public safety is always a priority. I think enforcement can be tough here on a bike. I know, I think we could talk to the police department more. I think they're a great partner. So I think that's one way I would look at it. But I agree, it's a concern, and it's both for the bikers and for the drivers. So enforcement, I think something needs to be done. Whether, I don't know if tickets are the answer, but I think a dialogue definitely needs to be opened up. Maybe some meetings, and maybe a small steering committee to talk about that issue. So I think public safety, that's definitely an issue we want to look into and address.
All right. Councillor James?
Yep, thank you. And I think it is a very good and important question, because there are so many email exchanges between me, Chief Del Paso, and also some of the constituents who raise this concern. And I'm glad that you are raising, you are using the bike lane. Now, here's the thing. And the chief's position is very clear, that he would rather focus on crimes and also all the safety concern in this city, other than implementing bike safety, which does make very big sense. But we know that the bike lanes, yes, we put them on, but they are, it's not a done deal yet. They need a lot of improvement, and I think that will help. The second thing is, when we talk about those food patrols that we have during the summer, we can empower a group of people who would be doing, whose role would be to just look into ways in making sure that bikers are safe and also drivers are safe. And that it won't be possible through just talking. But I'm willing to put a resolution forward that the council will weigh in, in order to bring more bikes safely and friendly in this community.
Excellent. And we're going to go to closing statements now. Ali, I'll start with you. Two minutes.
Thank you so much. And, I mean, I've been at the council maybe six months now. And my presence at the council has been felt, and greatly. I receive so many great feedback from my constituents, because I'm representing them to the best of my abilities. Not only to improve the communication, but also to making sure that their voices are being heard and respected, right? We have been doing so many things in this city with us of proper processes. You know, the way we do things need to be changed. And I think with the Burlington DPW, they're doing an incredible job in engaging more the community, and I want to bring more ideas to that. I also want to look into ways that we prioritize safety as well as education. At the city, it is our moral obligation in making sure that our students, our families, everyone is safe. And also, we are investing to the best of our abilities to our education, because we want to raise, building a brighter future, right? I hope that you all will join me on March 6th to get me reelected again, to be your voice at the council, and also to making sure that the services that are needed in our Ward 7, in our area of town, are being met. Thank you so much.
James, to you, closing statement?
So I started this process only four short weeks ago, and I got involved by going to a few council meetings. And all of a sudden, a passion in me just to get involved. And also, I was talking to neighbors, and I felt maybe our voices weren't being heard. And some of the issues that Ward 7 was facing really needed more attention and brought to the council's attention. And I also feel a lot of collaboration needs to happen with other councillors and across the aisle. I don't always agree with Kurt and Dave on issues, but when a neighbor is right on the other side of my North Avenue, the issues are close to both me and my neighbor. So I feel like that collaboration needs to happen. I'm really passionate about it. And because I think that's going to make the New North End stronger, because these issues can really get solved. So I think that needs to happen. And I would like to see that happen during the next two years. So I hope you'll vote for me on March 6th.
Great. Thank you to both of our candidates. And for our newer viewers, Kurt and Dave are City Councillor Kurt Wright and City Councillor Dave Hartnett, both representing the New North End. I'm Morgan True. Thank you for tuning in to Town Meeting Television. This has been the Ward 7 Candidates Forum. Thank you to both of our candidates. It was an excellent forum, and we really appreciate all the calls that we got. Stay tuned. We have one more forum for you. That's the Ward 8 Forum. If you have questions for those candidates, give it a few minutes, then give us a call, Thanks a lot, and be back with you shortly.
All right.
Go relax a little, yeah.
Hello and welcome back to Town Meeting Television here on Channel 17. I'm Morgan True, your host for the evening, and we have one final candidate forum. I'm here with the candidates for Ward Eight City Council. We have incumbent, independent, but endorsed by the Democrats, Adam Roof, and also J.F. Carter Newbezer, a progressive. Thank you to both for being here, and we will go ahead and dive right in with opening statements, two minutes each, and Adam, start us off.
Great, thank you, Morgan. I know you've been here all night, and they save the best for last, Ward Eight. Thank you all for tuning in at home. Hello, yep, my name is Adam Roof. I am the current city councilor representing Ward Eight. I live on Pearl Street, just down the street here from Channel 17, and I am seeking reelection this town meeting day on March 6th. Quickly about myself, I've lived in the Ward Eight/Ward One neighborhood area for about 10 years now, and I came to Burlington, as many young people do, to go to UVM. I was a first-generation college graduate. While at UVM, I served in various community leadership roles and eventually graduated with degrees in political science, English, and Vermont Studies. To give you a sense of my workload, and less, I think, my experience over the last three years as your city councilor, I want to kind of go over some of the committee work that I've done and the initiative work that I've done. Some of the committees that I've served on have been the Community Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, of which I'm currently chair, the Public Safety Committee, of which I'm also the chair, the License Committee, the Local Control Subcommittee, the Human Resources Committee, and the Institutions Committee. That's a heavy workload for a new city councilor, but I wanted to take that on. I'm also the council-appointed member of the Downtown Improvement District Advisory Board, the Vehicle for Hire Licensing Board, as well as the Parallel Justice Commission. In addition to my committee work, I've led two major policy initiatives. The first, out of the Public Safety Committee, initiative supporting Burlington's homeless community, and out of my License Committee and Public Safety Committee, sorry, I'm going long, initiative on preventing sexual assault. So, to close, I think I have a track record of getting things done and taking a collaborative approach to public service, and I'm looking forward to the next few weeks and Election Day coming up. Thanks.
Great. Carter, your opening statement?
Yeah, thank you very much. My name's Carter Newbezer. I'm running for city council in Ward Eight. You know, I'm running because I've talked to a lot of students and a lot of permanent residents who are just tired of status quo establishment politics and economics. You know, when we talk about the affordable housing crisis that our community finds itself in, and in Ward Eight, the housing crisis is pretty acute, you know, there are really two distinct visions. One, that's being handed down by my opponent in the mayor's office, is, you know, we could just build our way out of this problem, continue to build more and more market-rate housing, continue to put the interests of wealthy developers, a lot of the times from out of Burlington, you know, ahead of the interests of seniors, of working-class folks, of students. And I fundamentally disagree with that. So, you know, what we're proposing is that, you know, if you're a student, if you're a senior, if you're a young person trying to come into Burlington, you should be able to afford to live in the city. You should be able to, you know, be making minimum wage and still afford rent and still have some money left over to save. You know, we think this is a complicated issue, obviously, affordable housing and affordability, but we have, you know, really an array of options in terms of solving this problem. So, one thing we're proposing is investing in more affordable co-op housing and getting UVM to really invest in co-op student housing, because I can tell you from my conversations and from a lot of my experiences as a current student, you know, people want affordable co-op housing. That really does increase quality of life, and it would go a long way to reducing rent prices downtown. Second, we need to strengthen our inclusionary zoning laws. That has been a success, and we need to build upon that progress. Third, we need to hold landlords accountable, because when we talk about, you know, affordability, it is the prices, but it's also the quality of housing. So, more aggressive enforcement of our housing code. And then the last two are just, you know, we need to raise wages in the city. That's, you know, essential to address affordability.
All right, and the last thing?
Yes, the last thing, I apologize, I'm going over. We need to build on, you know, the success that we've already had with the land trust model. That's been something that, you know, our community for decades has supported, and we need to continue supporting that.
Thank you, Carter. And because you did invoke your opponent in your response, I'll give Adam a minute now to respond to that.
Yeah, I can probably go point by point, pretty quick instead of minute?
Yes.
Okay, great. You know, first, this notion that there's some unified approach from the cabal of the mayor and city councilors handing down some housing policy from high above is just erroneous, it's baseless, it's a deviation from the truth, and I've been consistent on kind of rebutting that each time. Affordable housing and co-op housing, student co-op housing, I've done that research and spoken with the Berkeley folks who do this model really well, commonly invoked in debates around student co-op housing. Great idea, good model. They operate off of a 501(c)(3) model, but their start was when they had buildings and property gifted to them, and they are first to admit that starting from scratch in that model is really difficult, and so it would probably take community partners coming together. That would take some experience to make happen. The IZ, you know, that, thank you for coming up, you know, bringing that, agreeing with me on strengthening the IZ. Landowner accountability, I've done it for...
All right.
Wages, yeah, I mean...
Well, so, thank you for that response, that's a minute, and I'm actually going to go to the phones now, and we have the phone lines blowing up. If you'd like to ask a question, it's 802-862-3966. Hello, you're on the air, welcome to Town Meeting Television. What's your question for the candidates?
My question is, are you happy with the city's current inclusionary zoning policies, and what changes, if any, would you propose?
All right, thank you for that, and we will go first to Adam.
I'd actually invite...
No, no, sorry, you're correct, you're correct. Carter, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I am in support of our city's inclusionary zoning laws. I do think that we need to be increasing the percentage of new developments coming into the city to, you know, hold landlords accountable, hold developers accountable, and say, you know, if you're going to put money in here and you're going to make a profit off our housing market, that you need to be, you know, building real affordable units. I'm not against, in principle, the mall development that happened a few months ago. The problem is, is that what is being labeled affordable in the mall development isn't affordable for working-class, you know, working-class folks, for students, for seniors, excuse me. So, you know, when we talk about affordability, we actually have to find affordability, and that has to mean that if you're living in the city, if you're a working-class resident, you can also afford rent and to invest in a house or something like that.
All right, go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, so defining affordability is now something that my opponent and I share as a priority. I think that the difference is, you know, how do you get there? Is, it takes experience with working in this policy environment. The way that you get to, it's really easy to say we need to define it, well, this is how you define it. You have to shift how we measure area median income, which is handed down to us from Housing and Urban Development. Federal HUD establishes that standard right now. It's not Burlington-specific, it's Chittenden County-wide, includes some of the islands and Franklin County as well. We need to be reestablishing, redefining that based on those terms. We also have to be realistic and consistent with our narrative and how we talk about affordable housing development. In Burlington, if you're a supporter of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, you must also then be in some way, shape, or form a supporter of new housing development at market-rate levels, because IZ doesn't kick in unless we're developing more than, in most parts of the city, four units at a time in one development. So, that would be, in really short terms, how you can improve the inclusionary zoning ordinance. I think if you're going to increase the percentage of any development that's going to be affordable, you need to take into account the competitive marketplace of capital within Chittenden County, because developers will decide to go elsewhere. And yes, they will make a profit, but they can go elsewhere, and their dollar will go much further, just over an imaginary line that does not have this ordinance. So, you have to be able to broker those relationships and those economic terms.
All right, thanks, and we're going to stay with the phones. We have a ton of callers here, thank you guys for that. Hello and welcome, you are on the air of Town Meeting Television. What's your question for our Ward Eight candidates?
Hi, I'm a current college student, and I'm wondering what actions the city government can take in order to reduce sexual assault on college campuses?
All right, thank you for that, and this one does go to Adam first. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, and this is something that I've worked on, so it's good that it'll go to me first. So, sexual assault, something that I've been working on since I was actually a student at UVM. I started my work in student health, student life issues as a freshman, and then I served as a student trustee at UVM for several years and worked on, from the top-down model, on how to do student life and student health issues better at UVM. I'd worked at the National Center for Campus Public Safety on delivering sexual assault training to campuses all across the country, and now as a city councilor, I've been leading, like I said in my opening, an initiative on preventing sexual assault in the downtown, especially the nightlife environment. We know that instances of sexual assault happen disproportionately to those aged 18 to 24, and in most cases, alcohol is involved. As a former bartender, which I was just four or so years ago, I know how impactful that sort of intervention can be in those environments. So, this training, which actually kicks off this week, or rather, next week, I apologize, will go for the next 18 months. We'll measure that success, and then hopefully bake it into the city licensing policy, which will require all city licenses who furnish alcohol to be providing this training to their staff.
Carter, your views on what the city could be doing to address campus sexual assault?
Yeah, so I just want to take a moment. In politics, we often are divided on a lot of issues, and I want to thank Adam, as my representative and as a student, for making progress on this issue, so I'm going to acknowledge that. That being said, there's a lot, there's a whole lot we still have to do. Most college sexual assaults for students happen on-campus versus off-campus, and so, you know, we had this really nice training when I was a freshman coming into UVM around sexual assault, and it was actually really effective and got to, you know, got to a lot of, you know, white dudes like myself, who, you know, when we're talking about sexual assault, we have to pair it with a conversation about white supremacy in our society and with systematic oppression of women and of people of color. So, that's something that we really have to bring to the conversation. That being said, I think that, you know, UVM really does have to do more, and, you know, what we're proposing as a campaign is that we take that sexual assault training that we get freshman year, and then keep that conversation going and have a continuous conversation around this issue, and have them, you know, require mandatory training every year for all grades, because we have this great conversation, and then, you know, as a student, we just hear nothing about it for four more years. So, we have to do more on campus, and that's really an important issue for our campaign.
All right, thank you, and we're going to stay with the phones. Again, if you have a question for our candidates, it's 802-862-3966. Hello, you're on the air. What is your question for our Ward Eight candidates?
Hi, I'm just curious, what experience do you both have in managing a budget? And could you tell me how big the Burlington City budget is right now?
All right, thank you for that. This one is Carter first.
Awesome, yeah, so, the Burlington City budget, it's, you know, it depends what you're talking about when you're talking about the size of it. Right now, it's roughly $70 to $80 million a year. You know, we do have experience in...
That might be the general fund, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that's the general fund, yes. So, we do, I do have experience, and I'm getting experience in managing a budget right now through the campaign. In addition, you know, when we talk about experience, it is great to have experience on city council, and I don't fault Adam for that, but experience can be learned versus values are really inherent in the politician running. We think that we are running a strong values campaign, and we're excited to get to work for the people of Burlington.
Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, the general fund is, it's $73 million and about $73,300,000 in change, that's general fund. We also have our special revenue funds, as well as our enterprise funds, and that's about another, like, BED is a special revenue, rather, an enterprise fund, that's a $63 million budget a year. We've got $12.5 million coming out of our special revenue bond, that's our Tiff District, our Church Street Marketplace, million-dollar budget for Church Street Marketplace. All under, together, it's about $200 million under management. This is, so, experience, I think the question is our experience. I've gone through several budget processes. Municipal budgeting is really different than normal budgeting, and, well, during my time at UVM, which was a budget which was much larger, institutional budgeting, higher ed budgeting is a lot, pretty complex as well, and I think there was an invocation there with regard to principles and standards of political ideology. Just to be clear, I consider myself socially liberal, but fiscally, I consider myself just responsible, a millennial who lived through the Great Recession. I take my dollars pretty seriously, and, actually, they're not my dollars, I take tax dollars very seriously, so, I think that Carter and I share a lot of those ideologies. I think that I have the experience in translating those into action and policy, in this case, related to the budget.
All right, thanks, and we are going to stick with the phones as they continue to light up. Thank you for your calls again. If you have a question for either of our candidates, it's 802-862-3966. Here we go. Welcome, you're on the air. What's your question for our Ward Eight candidates?
Hi, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about your background, and what it was that inspired you to get involved in local politics?
All right, great question. Adam, you?
Yeah. I guess my, yeah, my background, and then I think it does lead into why I got involved. Both, what, do I have a minute?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, wow, a lifetime. So, I come from Massachusetts, I came to UVM, like I said in my opening, I came to Vermont for UVM. It was at UVM that I got involved in a lot of, in a lot of community activities. I got, like I've mentioned, the Board of Trustees a few times now, so I'll lay off that, but involved in the Peer Judicial Board, the Academic Integrity Council, the Dean of Students' Advisory Board, the Athletic Council. It was really there that I started to get a sense of what leadership was. It hadn't really translated into politics yet. I had studied political science, I had helped manage campaigns, Democratic Progressive Candidates in Boston, which was, I guess, my first touch of conventional electoral politics. But it wasn't until 2014, when this opportunity to run for city council sort of by default side of, kind of fell into my lap after someone who was running dropped out, and it was then that I first considered myself someone who would run himself in a campaign setting. And we tried that out, and it was successful, and I'm back trying it again, so, that's it.
Carter?
Awesome, yeah, so my first experience with electoral politics was Bernie's historic 2016 campaign. You know, he really spoke to my values as a young person, and it was the first candidate I saw on the national stage that I could really feel comfortable. You know, I put in hundreds of hours of organizing for him, phone banking, while being a full-time student, while having two part-time jobs, and he really inspired me, and what I kind of took from that, even though we lost the campaign, is that we as citizens, and as we, you know, as young people and as activists, need to be constantly involved. You have to be, you know, not everybody has 24 hours, seven days a week, to be committing to the political process, but we have to be involved somehow. And so, you know, after Bernie's campaign, I did a couple of different, you know, small, just activist, non-paid projects. I worked for VPRG, and I really fell in love with Vermont, because I got to go to all these different homes and talk to people all across the state who I didn't necessarily agree with, but nonetheless, you know, there were Bernie supporters, Trump supporters, Hillary supporters, all who were just genuinely nice, invited me in, fed me dinner, wanted to hear my life story, and just had an honest conversation. And so, that was a really, really formative experience for me politically. You know, the reason I jumped into this race specifically is because there's a really big gap that's really acute in Ward Eight specifically, and that's the gap between students and more permanent residents in our community. You know, what I've learned going around talking to both groups is that there's really a breakdown of communication between those two groups, and unfortunately, you know, when there's a breakdown of communication, there's a lot of misunderstanding, but when you speak to issues about affordability and real affordability, when you speak to issues about climate, when you speak to issues about racial justice and, you know, breaking down systematic oppression, most people in our society or in our community in Ward Eight agree with those issues, and so it's our job as a campaign and as elected officials to bring people together around shared progressive values.
All right, thank you both, and we have one caller here, one last caller, but if you have a question for our candidates, again, the number is 802-862-3966. Hello and welcome to Town Meeting Television. What's your question for our candidates?
Hi, my question is, how do each of you plan to retain young people in Burlington after they graduate? And to Carter, do you plan to move out of Burlington once, wait, in two years?
Okay, well, we'd like questions that both candidates can answer, so I think we're going to...
I'll answer that if...
Okay, well, you guys can both answer whether you have plans to move in the next two years, but again, the question was about retaining young people in the workforce, so to you, Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, this is something near and dear to my heart, because it's something that's affected me quite personally over these last few years. The vast majority of folks that I graduated with have left Burlington. Most of them have left the state to pursue opportunities, whether it be in DC or New York or out west somewhere, and that is, I think, maybe one of the bigger problems that our economy needs to overcome in the next few years. There's a few ways to do it. First, I think we need to be, a lot of this stuff goes back to housing, and we need to be developing housing and building opportunities for people to frankly find upward mobility in their housing options, because right now, like myself, I can, I'm still renting, because there's nothing for sale, and there's, you know, when you're someone who doesn't, who's not required to live in a map because of the service that you do on a city council, you're going to choose, for the most part, places that are going to, where your dollars are going to go further. The second part of the affordability equation, of course, is always income. Yes, we need to be raising the minimum wage, and although Vermont State Senate took action on that this week, but from a local perspective, we need to be building jobs that can support the levels of income that are necessary for recent graduates and young professionals to find, so they can, again, find that upward mobility.
Great, Carter, to you?
Yeah, so, just quickly, yes, I do consider Burlington my home, and I will be staying here regardless of this election or going forward, or if I win, or if I, you know, serve a two-year term, three-year term. I consider this place, you know, my home, and so, why I'm running and why I'm so involved, and I want to get young people involved, is because I think that, you know, we contribute so much as young people to this, whether it be the music scene, the art scene, financially, we contribute quite a bit in terms of, you know, room and board costs and housing costs once we move off campus. So, you know, when we talk about retaining young people, there's kind of this thought out there in the community that, you know, we had to fight for the right to vote for college students and things like that. So, we have a huge, huge opportunity as a state and as, you know, a city of Burlington with Champlain and UVM to retain young people, and that's good for everybody, whether you're progressive, conservative, independent, left-wing, far-right, whatever it may be, you want young people putting down roots here, and it starts with being able to afford a house. It starts with being able to afford rent. It starts with being able to find a job where, you know, you're not just scraping by and you can start to save up and really invest in the community. A lot of people who are my age feel like we are invested in the community, like this is home, and we just want to fight to make it as equitable and a sustainable community as we can.
All right, and thank you for that, and I forgot to press you on this. Adam, any plans to move in the next two years?
Nope.
As that was part of the question. All right, cool, well, moving on, we've exhausted our callers, and so I would like to ask a question on food policy. We've actually had some incumbents say that they had not been as aware of Burlington's food policy or what it is currently, but at one point, Burlington had the goal of producing 10% of its food within the city. What do you think of that goal, and what else could be done to eliminate hunger in this community while also giving equitable access to quality nutritious food and also using that as a way to grow the economy? To you, Adam.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's a great goal. I'd have to be really curious to find out what currently that percentage is, what are we sourcing within the city? I think it's a little bit off the mark, though. Too often, in municipal politics, especially in places like Vermont or in the Northeast of America, we think in terms of municipalities or cities, where really the systems that we're talking about are more suited for more than just one city, more regional, or in this case, maybe like a county. So, I think we'd want to look at both of those metrics. A big thing for me that we need to, we need to start working on, and I've been working on some of this through my involvement on the Downtown Improvement District Advisory Board, is finding a way to facilitate, or to attract a more affordable grocery store in our downtown. We love City Market, they do great things for the community, but the fact of the matter is that folks who can't quite afford it are finding themselves having to travel to Shaw's or Price Chopper, or wherever it might be. So, as we look forward to a newly-developed future of downtown, and as part of that conversation, this expanding of what's called the DID, Downtown Improvement District, which will, businesses are funding, it's the Downtown Improvement District, another big conversation. A key priority of that needs to be bringing more affordable food options into the downtown where folks can be purchasing those goods.
All right, Carter?
Yeah, so food policy is something I'm really passionate about. Right now, we have a mandate coming down from the State House in Act 148, and basically that's saying that, you know, we can't be sending food waste to the landfill anymore, that we have to properly, or, sorry, we have to properly compost that food as a community. And so, I think with this new mandate coming down from the State House, there's a real opportunity to set up a network with restaurants and with grocery stores and really to fill some gaps that are currently within our system. So, for example, you know, if a restaurant has some excess food, it just goes in the dump, so as we're going to create a network to properly compost that food, we could say, hey, is there any food that, you know, we can get to people who need it and help to solve some of the food insecurity issues that we have in the city? And we could actually, and I, you know... And we could actually, and I, you know, I like Adam's idea of getting a more affordable grocery store. Obviously, City Market isn't something that's, you know, perfect for a lot of working-class residents or students. But I think a big thing, and the biggest opportunity we have going forward in terms of food policy, is actually this mandate for completely composting our food waste, and then hopefully getting some food that, you know, doesn't need to just be thrown out, but given to people at an affordable price, you know, who are suffering from food insecurity. And that's a lot of folks in our community, and a lot of folks are struggling right now. So, we have to recognize that, and we really do have to speak to their concerns.
All right, great. And we are going to move to closing statements, two minutes each. Carter, we'll start with you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, you know, want to say that I, this entire process has been really humbling, win or lose. I feel like I've really talked to a lot of folks in the community who just genuinely are fighting for a better life for themselves, for their families, and that's been a really humbling process. You know, I do think that there are really two distinct visions for how we solve affordability in the city. One is more of this, you know, trickle-down housing economics that just doesn't work. And there's been decades in our community on the national scale to show that, you know, just playing to the interests of the wealthy, of the economic and thus political elite in Burlington, aren't, you know, isn't really going to do anything for working-class folks, for students, for seniors, struggling with affordability. So, I humbly ask you, you know, on March 6th, to give me your support, and, you know, together, I think we're going to create a more equitable, sustainable, inclusive society. Thank you.
Great, yeah. You know, it's late, and so I won't go on a lengthy oration, or I probably won't take up the total two minutes, but I think my closing thought that I'll leave you all with tonight is a bit of a personal one. And it's a simple fact that I really do love this community, and I am invested in it, you know, 100%. It's a place that has given me a lot of opportunity and has given me a place to grow and to be successful in a lot of different ways. And my service on the city council really is nothing more to me than a way to give back for everything that this city has given to me so far. And I plan to be here to receive from it and to give back to it for many more years to come. And so, with that, I want to thank Carter for another good debate.
Yeah, thank you.
But also, I think we should both thank Morgan for...
Yes.
For a long night of work.
Yeah.
And you get to go home.
Saving the best for last, though.
I do get to go home, that is true. And thank you to Channel 17 for having these forums. It's a real community asset. And so, yeah, everyone get out there and vote. You can vote early, it takes very little time. You can do it at City Hall, it's quick and easy. Also, if you can't manage to get there before, get there on March 6th. We really, really appreciate you tuning in. These were our Ward Eight candidates, incumbent, independent, Adam Roof, who has been endorsed by the Democrat, by the Democrats. There's more than one of them in Burlington.
Sure.
And Carter Newbezer, who has been endorsed by the progressives and is himself a member of the Progressive Party. Thank you to you both. Excellent forum, excellent evening of forums. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. And, yeah, we appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you.